If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question.
Evelyn Slakbar, 43, Denver, please. X and Y, the amounts of the bids that were rejected?
Fifteen, X one?
Yeah.
Okay.
The rejection of the bids.
For the Digital Media Lab, the low bid that was, met all the requirements of the bid specifications, was $199,699. And for the Building Five, again, the low bid that met all the qualifications for the RFP, for the bid that we had put out, was $648,000.
Okay, and what were the highest bids?
Highest bids for the Building Five renovation was $966,990. And for the Media Lab, the high bid was $237,000.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
I apologize if I don't see it on the agenda, but I'm just hoping for an update based on the last board meeting regarding any security measures being implemented in this school. Will this be on the agenda and will there be time to ask questions at that time?
I'm going to do that as per my separate tense reports as far as what we've done.
Okay.
I'll present this for any resolutions.
Okay, and then will we have an opportunity later on in the meeting to ask questions?
On any item that's not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Shum.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Shum.
Perfect lead-in. I'd like to begin this evening with some security updates. We provided a lot at our February 28 meeting. However, it is, as I said, it would be a conversation that was going to continue. Yesterday, we held a meeting with Chief of Police James Vitale and Captain Steve Jaffe, all of our principals and our central office administrative staff. We began discussions about all of the recommendations that were made through security of emails that I received over the last three weeks, as well as those that are coming into the Security Info email account. Part of what it is that we talked about are some of the things we've most recently done that we're proud of. The first is, as of March 1st, security ID badges have been given to every Mawa police officer. The badge number is clearly printed on each badge. The purpose of this is, is in order for our police officers to get into the school, they need to use the buzz-in system that we all use. However, in an emergency situation, we don't want to have to necessarily wait for somebody to buzz somebody in. So they have 24 access, 24-hour access to our buildings at all times. So we believe that that is an important addition. We also spoke a lot yesterday about see something, say something. It was something that I had used in a lot of the communication. But what does that look like? What kind of communication, assembly programs, public service announcements that we'll be able to have and share with students as to those things that they should look for? There's some really amazing videos out there that you'll watch and not see things that happen in the background. And that's something that you need to be aware of in your surroundings. So our hope moving forward in conjunction with the Mawa Municipal Alliance, our Board of Education, and the Police Department to start getting out some of that information to you. There is also a resolution on our agenda this evening as another security protocol that we're putting in called Lobby Guard. Lobby Guard is a system that allows anyone coming into the school to place their driver's license through a scanner. And when they do that, it is immediately uploaded and checked against the Megan's Law registry. With that said, once somebody is cleared for that reason and not part of that registry, they'll be printed a tag, a deserves tag, that would be clearly noted. We're going to do that at the high school at this point if the board chooses to approve that this evening. We're going to see how that works out and in time... Hi, Dr. Moore. In time, it is our hope to be able to move that down into other schools in our building. But the conversations are absolutely continuing. As I had said and worthy of note again, we have a lot of security protocols in place, but we can always improve on what it is that we have. And those security protocols will require some thoughtful conversations with our Police Department. We are in the business of education. And although the safety of our students is incredibly important to us, the security of them, a lot of that really needs to come from the inside of our Police Department. So we're going to continue those conversations moving forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gleefer, can we do the press this evening?
Yes, I can. Just related to the budget, the past couple of weeks I've been given updates as the governor's budget address have been delayed from initially in February to just being occurred yesterday. That has delayed it to put back our budget calendar slightly. We did have to add one board debate meeting to adopt and approve the preliminary budget that'll be submitted to the county for review. That additional board meeting is scheduled for next week, March 21st. It's going to be at 6:30 here at the Central Office. That will keep us on schedule to still have our final budget hearing at the April 25th meeting. Thank you to our custodial staff and maintenance staff for working with the snowstorm last week, as well as there was a power outage to a couple of schools on Red Ridge Road over the weekend. Our technology staff, thanks to them for coming in on the weekend to make sure the technology infrastructure was up and ready to go for Monday. And lastly, just an update. It's an item on the board agenda as well related to the cell tower. Just letting everybody know that we are extending the period of time to review the bids that have been received. Both bidders were reached for their consent to extend that time, which is what we need to do per law. And both bidders did allow us to extend the time for review. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Gleefer, anything for us this evening?
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Ted.
I'm really excited about highlighting six of our staff members tonight. Can those who are being highlighted, can you just stand in your places? And that's just the beginning. So what we'd like to do is, last time we started with Betsy Ross. We're going to be starting with Mawa High School this evening. Our first person that we're highlighting is Mr. Ted Lesby. He's our head custodian.
After serving in the Navy for four years, Ted's first career was that of a cross-country 18-wheeler trucker. Ted then became a nighttime custodian at Joyce Kilmer School where he worked full-time for four years. In 2002, Mr. Lesby was asked to join our team by becoming Mawa High School's head custodian. For the last 16 years, Ted has served the staff, students, and the district with pride, care, and diligence. It is his service and leadership that our academic, athletic, and co-curricular venues are always readily available for students, staff, and the public. What is most admirable about Mr. Lesby is his ability to manage multiple tasks, his unwavering loyalty, and his keen sense of humor.
It's a story how I came to this job. My wife and I were getting married. I was an over-the-road truck driver. And my wife and I were getting married in August of 1997. So she didn't think I'd be home for the wedding because I was always out like four weeks at a time. So I left the job and they had just put an addition on Joyce Kilmer.
I think in 1997, Ted started as a full-time custodian at Joyce Kilmer. And he worked at night for three years. They were looking for a substitute custodian. So I figured I would work the summer. We'd get married, I'd go back to my driving job. At the end of the summer... When I became principal in 2002, I asked Ted to join our team starting July 1st to come to the high school because the high school head custodian was transferred to Lennepum Meadows because we had just opened that building. So Ted was actually one of the first people I hired as principal to join the team here and has been our head custodian for the last 16 years.
And I've been here ever since. So many things going on. There's seven days a week, something's going on here. And it's exciting, it's a challenge.
Ted does a number of things for me professionally as far as getting the building ready for a number of different events and venues. When you're the head custodian of a high school, which is a 24/7 operation, so you have before-school activities, the academic day, and then after-school and sporting activities that happen, there's a lot of responsibility that you have.
I always find it interesting how he can manage... ...in time, be very happy to help a student that comes up to him.
The first day of school, when the new kids come in and the younger one, they're lost and they don't know where they're going. And you can see they need some help and direction to go. So I kind of always think about that and enjoy the first couple of days of school because they're always, I can't get my locker or I can't find my classroom. And to send them down the hall in the right direction, it's a little bit rewarding to me to get them started in the right direction.
He's responsible and reliable. He does everything that anybody ever asks him to do.
Even new teachers come in, you know, they have that look on their face and you know they lost. And they're appreciative of you giving them a hand.
Ted is just such a painful part of our team here. And I think he's also a person who sometimes doesn't get the recognition that he deserves... He's got a tough job because when there's a knock on Ted's door, there's a problem. When he picks up the phone, there's a problem. When he checks the help desk request, there's a problem. I know I speak for the rest of the staff here that we really appreciate all that Ted does and we appreciate the care and love that he shows us.
I joined the Navy in 1963 and I was in for four years, got out in 1967. I was on aircraft carriers. I was on the tech force in the gun department. We refueled at sea. We took on stores at sea, ammunition. And I ran rigs to bring these supplies across. I enjoyed my Navy time. I really liked being in the Navy. They teach you, they structure you on how to take care of projects and situations that arise and how not to get excited over things, to not get all flustered or anything like that, to just think about it, handle the situation. I do a lot of hunting. My wife goes with me. She hunts also with me. That's enjoyable. We like to do that together. We cruise every year. Every year we go on a cruise to the Caribbean and we just enjoy that. I love going to sea. Like I said, I was in the Navy, so I really enjoy that. I ride a motorcycle and she'll ride with me. I was going on a hunting trip and I said, "Come on, you want to go with me?" And she said, "Oh, if I go, I want to hunt too." So she took all her courses, safety courses, gun courses, and now we hunt together.
With the new trend in education focusing on mindfulness, a big part of mindfulness is our physical space and how organized is it, how neat is it? And so I'd like to say that Ted really helps us in our job to create a mindful environment. As much as the staff cares about Ted, he cares about us.
The three things I admire most about Ted would be his work ethic, unwavering loyalty to this building and to the district, and not to the building just as a building, but to the school community. And I would say to you, he has a really good sense of humor. Some of the best times that I have are when we're laughing about something or sharing a joke. There are times in our 16 years of working together where I have, you know, spoken to Ted and say, "Hey, what's the lowdown on this?" Or "What's the lowdown on that?" You know, and he kind is able to give you the unfiltered, you know, straight-up story. And usually, he's pretty spot-on.
When I ask people about Ted and what comes to mind, commitment, consistency, honesty, people enjoy his sense of humor. He has a really caring nature about him. He'll give you a hug in the hallway when you need it. He'll reach out and if he finds out something that's going on in your life, he'll ask how you're doing. So he's really, he's really very caring.
Often in all of our positions, whether you're an administrator, a principal, a supervisor, a teacher, a custodian, a bus driver, a food service worker, a secretary, a paraprofessional, our job is to serve kids, you know? And I think Ted really is a good role model for service. There's a void when he's not around. It's just different. You know, he was just on vacation and you're like, "How many days till this guy comes back?"
He cares. He cares beyond what is expected of him. And that's why this place is run smoothly, because of people like him.
Most of what he does is behind the scenes. And Ted is what I would consider a really humble guy, you know? And for me, Ted has, for 16 years of working with Ted, Ted has served the school community, our students, and our staff admirably.
Does a lot of things in the background that people don't know. He doesn't look for accolades. He just does them because he gets his own sense of worth out of it, his own pride in his job.
The challenge of a little project in your room or something like that. And everybody here, you know, you walk down the hall, "Good morning, how are you?" You know, that means a lot. So I enjoy that from the staff, kind of a closeness that makes you feel good.
Big congratulations to Ted. Would you like to say anything to your fans?
Just want to thank everybody. Got tears on a Ted. All right, our next staff highlight is from Rampouge Middle School. Mercedes Blanco. Can you just stand and wave to everyone? You're famous now. Mercedes Blanco has served as a world language and English as a second language teacher for the past 17 years at Rampouge Middle School. Prior to her time working in Mawa, she taught in Jersey City for 10 years. Mrs. Blanco has always enjoyed positive relationships with all of her students and colleagues. Mercedes takes the greatest pride in the accomplishments of her English language learner students with whom she has built a wonderful rapport and sense of trust. In immigrating to the United States from Cuba as a young child herself, Mercedes connects with these students on a deeper level of personal understanding and experience. Recently, Mercedes started an after-school adult education program through which she teaches the parents of any ELL students in our school district. Rampouge is extremely privileged to have Mrs. Mercedes Blanco as a member of our faculty. And we look forward to all of the positive contributions she will continue to bring to our entire school community for the future. Here we go. Here we go.
I've been in the district for 17 years. I've been teaching for 27. Here, I've taught 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade Spanish. When I was a little girl, I used to put all my dolls, light them all up, and get a big blackboard and I used to pretend to be a teacher. But I always wanted, I always wanted to make a difference. Even if I go pausing on the stairs or something and then you see this one kid, a student that just, he just glows and that's what my students say, "Wow." You know what? I am so happy that I helped make a difference, like he changed.
I first met Mercy 17 years ago when the two of us started working here together in Mawa. However, I feel like I know Mercy a lot longer because Mercy used to work as a 2nd grade teacher in Jersey City with my mom.
Has always been very passionate, as long as I've known her, about teaching her students Spanish. And I honestly feel even, she's even more passionate about teaching her ESL students. And they've always been, she's always held them very near and dear to her.
I have seen her students walk in there in the morning sometimes and I see them and they feel frustrated because they don't understand the language or they feel nervous. And I know it feels like, you know, I immigrated to this country also. And she just works her magic. I don't know what she says to them, but I can hear it. These kids leave there and they're smiling and they're ready to learn and embrace the day. Good, so you're going to work on it in your notebook? Okay.
Every time, my daughter was so excited because Mrs. Blanco always encouraged her. Encourage, yes, I think encouragement is so important for a kid.
I'm their advocate, I'm their voice. I have to, I have to speak up for them. I have to, because they can't.
The first time we met each other is in the school's parents' meeting. And Mrs. Blanco, wow, she was so nice.
I just want them to have a voice. And they do, and it's wonderful. Especially when you see a student that comes here and starts talking because he's shy or she's shy and scared. And I could identify with them because that happened to me.
And she said, "You know, I was also an immigrant before, many, many years ago." She's, since she was a child. Yeah, and she know, I knew everything. I can understand their feeling. I can understand your feeling. So don't worry, trust me, just...
And I know what it feels like to be in a culture that you don't understand and sitting in a class where you don't know what's going on. And when you have someone like a teacher there that cares about you, even if she doesn't speak your language, you could feel that she has your back. She's so dedicated to her students. I mean, she really wants them to succeed and especially her ESL students. She works so hard to get these students acronized into the culture.
When I first came here, it was really hard for me. So the first teacher I saw was Ms. Blanco. I talked to her and I saw that she's a good teacher and she's going to like teach me a lot.
She didn't always teach us like language and things like that. She like taught us like, I mean, I've known her lessons to experience and she taught us like many things and it's like, you know.
And she's really popular because of her homework and her like tests and quizzes. And she loves to study in her class, so she can help us more.
Recently, Mercy started the adult ESL program in the district. And it has brought her to a whole new level, not only professionally, but personally.
I remember talking with her about starting some sort of ESL program, reaching out to the community, we're brainstorming. And finally, when the district approved an adult ESL class, Mercy jumped right on it. She said, "I really want to teach this class."
The words that she used is that it fills her heart to work with these adults and to be there for them and to teach them and to help them with anything that they need.
She finds this way to reach out to these people and make them feel comfortable and, you know, find a way to say, "Hey, we're in this together and we'll help you learn to navigate the English language."
I became to Mrs. Blanco's student. Now I'm learning from her directly.
They're amazing. They want to be part of this community so much. They want to learn their language so they could help their children. If you come to my classroom, it's a melting pot. I have the United Nations in there.
In that first evening, all these people are coming in and it was, you know, 10, 15, 20, and she wasn't sure how many she was going to have. And I'm in the library there with her and, you know, there were over 40 parents coming in. It's a hot pot, right? I mean, we have parents who are looking for ESL who have Hispanic background, but also had some Korean families, families from Russia and Ukraine. So it's a variety of people and she reaches out to all of them.
She's very proud of this new ESL program that she started for the parents of her students. And while I know it's very beginning stages, I have no doubt that she's going to take it and make it into an amazing program that will last and evolve for years to come.
This past week, I had some parents that have 8th grade students here. And they were asking me about the classes that the students have to pick. Like, how does that work? What do they need to do? Do they need to be here? These are little things that we take for granted because we know it, but they, they don't.
She is my go-to person. When I'm in a state of panic, I always go to Mercy for advice.
I've learned a lot from her. Most important is to always have a positive attitude. She is rarely without a smile on her face. And that translates not only, you know, when speaking to us, but also to the parents of students and to our colleagues. They absolutely adore her. It's just wonderful to see her in grandbabies now. She's a very proud mother as well as grandmother to her grandson and granddaughter, Mikey and Ava. And grandma looks like we're having a celebration stuff. I just come in and have a little chat with me and share something from her personal life, ask about what's going on with me and my family and my son. And that means the world to me and I love her so much.
She has a special connection with all of our ESL students from English language learners and their parents because she herself was an English language learner.
She brings this atmosphere of enthusiasm into the classroom.
It's really easy to communicate with Ms. Blanco and again, she's a very good teacher.
She always tells students first, makes them ask her out for her. "You're not doing okay." She tries to help you out and teach you.
She's compassionate, she's enthusiastic, she's very patient. She's incredibly patient and incredibly kind.
Look, you want to say anything or are you just relaxed?
I just want to say that I'm very honored to have this recognition and that I'm doing what I love and what I always wanted to do. So I'm very thankful.
So well deserved.
Thank you.
The next staff member that we'd like to recognize is Mary Saleri. She works at Joyce Kilmer School. Mary serves as an charcuterie paraprofessional at Joyce Kilmer School, a position she works at relentlessly to accommodate all students and their diverse needs. In this capacity, she has become an integral part of the Joyce Kilmer community. Ms. Saleri's flexibility is commendable. Her work ethic is admirable and her dedication to students is remarkable. She has extremely collaborated with staff which has a great impact on learning for all students. She is thoughtful, professional in the ways that she approaches problem-solving and decision-making with student needs in mind. Her optimism in service as an advocate for all students showcases her willingness to selfishly dedicate herself to the needs of those with whom she works.
16 years have gone by and I've gone from a part-time para to full-time para. I've been in a self-contained room. I've been in the gen ed room. Pretty much in a K5 environment. And I've been in George Washington, Lennepum Meadows, and now I'm here at Joyce Kilmer.
Power of the paraprofessional here in Mawa. You know, they're so valuable in so many different ways. And what she does for not only our students, but our staff is a matter...
The paraprofessionals kind of make or break a lot of what we do here because with the students in the classroom, if we have a good paraprofessional and they work well with the teacher and you and the student, it really is the recipe for success. And that's the difference that Mary makes.
She is able to really act as an extension of the teacher She is able to really act as an extension of the teacher and really do great instructional work with the students, even when the teacher's not around. And that really maximizes the supports that she's able to provide in class.
Tough to put into words. I think Mary is just an above and beyond type of an individual. She brings such a great level of knowledge and comfort to any situation, whether it's classroom or social. I think she offers just above and beyond dedication. She's very loyal. She's very hardworking. She's a problem solver. And that could be, you know, in writing something, you know, when they sat down to try to prepare something, a writing assignment. It could be in mathematics when they've had a tough problem. But I always feel best when I feel as though I've worked collaboratively with someone in a room to help the kids that I've been assigned. Those are my fondest memories.
Mary is just an exceptional woman. It's the woman that I'm kind of struck to be. She's honest. She's diligent. She's thoughtful. She perseveres. And she just does everything well. Mary doesn't do anything halfway. She does everything well.
The days that I go home at night and I feel like I've made a difference in the classroom is when I really feel as though I've worked very closely with the teacher to address particularly the students that I've been assigned. And they go home feeling successful.
My favorite teacher at Joyce Kilmer is she's very kind.
I love it. I love working with children. I love working with teachers. Particularly in most situations where, you know, you feel as though you make a difference in a child's life who's struggling and trying to get through school.
We recently had the ELL workshop and her and I were partnered together. And that was really the first time I got to sit down and have a conversation with her about students. And she's so knowledgeable and she's so willing to learn and engage and offer what she knows. And I think that that's really just a tale of an educator, willing to receive education but also share education.
Whether I came back from a staff development, she was ready to ask me what you learned, try something new, ready to support, never judged something that didn't work out.
Of all the kids that I've worked with, and I think back, I think I've worked with over twenty-five children, either as a one-on-one or a one-on-three or a classroom aide. So it's been a lot of kids that I've worked with through these sixteen years. And I probably, I was trying to count though, so I think I've worked with over eighteen teachers. And they all give me insights and experiences that have been really, really interesting and memorable.
We meet every morning, Mary and I. We get here about seven-thirty or seven-fifteen. And we decide which parents go to which classroom if people are absent. So we sit and we brainstorm. Anytime I need her, she'll say, Carol, what do you need me to do? I'll do it. And she just goes. So she just steps up no matter what and she does it, I think probably better than most people. So she's, she's my go-to. She's everybody's go-to. One of my memories of Mary besides being excellent at what she does and being respected and adored is that she has a great sense of humor. And we very often will meet in the lunchroom and, you know, look around and have a few jokes to ourselves over the morning. And that's how we alleviate a lot of stress that goes along with this job. And so she's just a great person.
We both come in early in the morning and it gives us time every day to catch up on things that are going on here or things that are going on at home. And I really value that time. So more than a memory, it's luckily an ongoing process that I can see her every day and share that with her.
Mary exemplifies what LMP she's all about. You know, she's warm. She's compassionate. She's someone that the students feel comfortable around.
She likes to smile a lot. She says like, write, think of their words. She makes me happy.
When she's working in a classroom, she's able to work with any student, no matter if she's assigned to them or if it's just a student in need.
She's very flexible. When I come in in the morning, she's always helping Miss Lucille with her professionals and scheduling. She's always willing to jump on a bus. If we need her, jump on a bus at the end of the school day just to help with other students.
I got transferred to Joyce Kilmer School and Mary reached out to me over the summer and offered to come in and help me set up. I realized that she, it was like cleaning my room up with my mom. I knew that and I knew that so even things would get done.
Well, Mary does have a hidden job where for the last few years, we want the chance to, you know, now. She represented us as a group. And again, she has done so much work and put so much thought into everything that she's done for us as a group, trying to make sure that we're validated as a group, over a hundred people, I believe now. And she's our advocate. She's our voice.
Always one step ahead. You know, my mentioning of trying reading programs, she went home and read the teacher's manual. So really, just above and beyond, ready to tackle any day and to really make each day count.
Building administrators have been always very supportive of me. I've had some great professional development that we've all as parents have received. So, and I've learned a lot through my fellow parents. I've watched them work with children and the techniques that they've used. I tried to emulate sometimes that I think is working.
The staff, she is a go-to, whether you're a paraprofessional or a teacher or administrator. She solves problems for all of us. She creates such a wonderful atmosphere here at Joyce Kilmer. You know, she's someone that is a major piece to why Joyce Kilmer is the way that it is.
She's our advocate. She's our voice. And she works very hard and takes it very responsibly. And answers a lot of, you know, she's our go-to person.
She's so humble. She does things and, you know, you say thank you and she's kind of like, it's no big deal. I was gonna do this anyway.
She makes a difference. She always makes a difference. And when you speak to children or teachers, they'll tell you the same.
She's just out there to help anybody and really, she's had high expectations for herself. And I think she makes everybody else's day that much better. She has the right words to say, whether it's to a student or to a colleague, and that's hard to come by as well.
Every day's a new experience and every day brings something memories that I've been very, very lucky to have experienced.
Lucky to have you, Mary.
Kristin, can you stand up so everyone knows who you are? Can you stand up? Kristin Bocelli. Yeah, yeah. You can sit down now. Kristin Bocelli is a grade three teacher at Lenape Meadows. Being a teacher today encompasses being a well-rounded and flexible individual. That is what Kristin Bocelli is and more. Mrs. Bocelli is a dynamic teacher that incorporates a variety of strategies to reach all of her students. She is engaging, energetic, and displays a passion for teaching that resonates through to her students. Kristin collaborates with her coworkers both on the school level and on the district level. She is a member of the District Technology Committee and presented this year to her district coworkers. Kristin is willing to share information, learn from others, and ask questions. It is all these qualities and more that make her a beloved member of Lenape Meadows School.
I've been here for twenty-two years. I started out at Comer &amp; Perry as a starting to lead replacement for Lori Briedman. Then I went to Betsy Ross for my first year and under Kathy Bennett, which was great. And then I went to Joyce Kilmer for third grade when they all went there. And then I came here after that. And I've been in third grade ever since.
The first thing that comes to mind, I have to say, is when we went on a field trip together. And we went to the Museum of Natural History in New York City. And she was about seven or eight months pregnant. You know, she's always there with the kids. It just goes to show you how determined she is to just do what's best for them.
She reaches out to the kids not only academically, but on a personal level where she can tell you something about each and every child.
I like when we built some things with, like Harry.
My favorite day was her birthday. Same, it was her birthday because she was like so excited all day. We built the Harry structure out of tin foil.
She has really high expectations for her students. But I think that she really provides a lot of TLC and always gives them what they need.
You see her, she always asks how your day is, good morning. And even with her students, she's very concerned about them emotionally and socially as well.
When I was a kid, I used to write my name backwards, like mirror image. And it wasn't until I was in college where one of my professors was like, you know, you might be slightly dyslexic. You know, because I would solve all the problems, right? Though my numbers would be reversed. When I was thinking about my major in college, I remember that moment because it kind of like stuck with me because I just remember that teacher crossing my name out and not even explaining to me or saying Kristin, you did that wrong. She just wrote it the right way. And I kind of always had wanted to be the teacher that wouldn't do that. When we were at Betsy Ross, we used to do like Prairie Day, it was called. And we would like churn butter and read Little House on Prairie. And we were too close, which was a lot of fun. So like every Friday, this girl would come in for an hour and the kids actually made their own sixteen patch of wood, which was pretty cool. So that was a fun memory from Betsy Ross. So a memory at Joyce Kilmer was a funny one, kind of, and a little scary too. But a tree fell in my room. It was over the summer. It was like a week before school started. And I snuck in. Donna let me sneak into my room because the floors were like just waxed and they were cutting trees between the two wings. And I got a phone call from a parent. Thank God, Candace Larson probably saved my life because she needed to talk to me about, I had her son that year. And as I was on the phone, the tree just came in, broke all the windows, and I had to teach that year heartbreak. And for here, I have to say, Lenape is my favorite memory. It has to do with the rainbow of respect. That was my idea. I had seen that in my kids' school and I thought it was pretty cool. So with the help of Roe Richter, our second grade teacher, we sketched it out. And then parents came in and did the tree with me and my class, did the leaves. So I'm kind of proud of that. It's like a fun memory. So maybe I kind of leave my mark here, I guess.
Mrs. Bocelli is a wonderful reputation here. So fortunate as a parent, I've had her two times for both my daughters. And I think that they both just say the same things about her. Her energy is amazing.
I just love the age and I love the, the kids are just so eager to learn. And they're very, and they want to learn. They're still at that age where they, and they can learn. The stuff that they can do within this year, I think is amazing. And I say this to the parents that back to school, they're like, you'll be blown away at what your kid can do in June versus how they come in as second graders. I think they really, their writing especially, really develops in their math skills. And it's just a fun age.
She's a collaborator. She works with her group, not only her grade level group, but the other grade levels.
She would ask my opinion, still does. Currently, we plan weekly together. And she asked me, Jen, how do you think this will work? Do you think we should do it differently? You know, if I have materials or things modified to help out with the lessons, she'll use them. She'll take them. She'll compliment me on them.
Why frogs? When I did my student teaching, I was with Bonnie Trunavian and she was penguins. That was her thing. And before I left, she said, Kristin, one thing you need to do is you need to pick an animal and have it associated with you and then the kids will always remember you.
There are frogs.
She has frogs. Tons of them.
Everything you have, bro.
At least a thousand.
The whole classroom was like a frog.
There's some appear, some appear. I like it. Shows her inner self.
Well, you'll see that my seventh grader still has her little frog. Mrs. Bocelli's classroom is a classroom. And a famous frog.
So when I had my first classroom, that was my theme, was frogs. And then Stan, like I have like an acronym, like focused, responsible, organized. Cool's a great year because I think I try to teach the kids that as well at this age because they're ready for it.
When I see a frog, I do. Logo. Everything with her is frogs. One day, during my found a bag of frogs. So wow, this is so great. We get this to Kristin. We went to her room. She was so excited. She gave each kid in her classroom the frogs and we gave her in a bag.
And one of the greatest things was probably a week or two after that, she said the kids are so intrigued with the frogs. They use them as manipulatives in math lessons. They use them as just little tools to have on their desk when they're feeling down.
Very helpful to all the teachers, whether, no matter where you were in your career, whether you were a novice, a brand new teacher, or you were her peer and have been teaching as long as her. Whether you're an old, a new teacher, Laura Fallow, very great teacher. She seems to always have the answers to help us.
I would love her beautiful smile. I would miss her smile because always when I walk in, I like her smile. She's bright and smiley.
And how she greets her students.
It's her smile. She really smiles. That's when we get something wrong and she says, try again.
We just have fond memories of really working closely together. And she was always just so, always had her door open for teachers and students. I see that it's a classroom full of children who are at all different levels. And she obviously teaches a class, but honestly, it's so magical. She touches like each individual child at the same time. It's so amazing to watch her teach.
There is kind of a motto that I think of when I think of Kristin, that good teaching is personal and she makes it personal.
So she's a great teacher. I'm very lucky to work with her for so many years.
I can be her friend.
Mr. Bocelli's gorgeous. Mr. Bocelli's never sad. Mr. Bocelli never gets out from us. Mr. Bocelli's prepared and planned.
You know, we have to have a safe environment. Like they have to feel good about themselves before I can do so many things. And I think I do a pretty good job of that because I really don't really have too many, never have discipline problems or anything like that because the kids kind of can work things out on their own and can learn and I can take them out.
Okay, the next staff member we'd like to recognize is Rachel Bradley. Rachel Bradley works at George Washington as a self-contained teacher in first grade. George Washington School is extremely fortunate to have Rachel Bradley as part of their team. Rachel's drive and determination to have all students succeed make her an invaluable asset to our school district. Rachel's passion for teaching, creativity, and ability to differentiate instruction makes each day a fulfilling, enriching experience for all of her students. Her ability to make learning fun and connected to student interests makes each student experience exciting, unique, and meaningful. Rachel's professional perseverance and love for students is admired by the entire GW community.
I've been at George Washington for five years and I teach different grade levels. Right now, I'm teaching first and second. And what I love about George Washington is that we have a great staff and a great community of teachers that work together. And Mr. Omer always puts on wonderful things for us to do on spirit day and we always have a lot of fun together.
I think she's a phenomenal teacher because she's very enthusiastic, very motivating.
So we met at this new teacher orientation. And in fact, our classrooms were directly across the hall from each other. So whenever we'd be staying at work late or just working on our lesson plays, we always called through the hallway, hey, how you doing?
I may teach the same grade levels over and over again. I may teach different grade levels, different years. But I always make sure that I change it up for myself so that I can have more fun. Because I know if I'm having fun, the kids are going to pick up on that too and have fun.
I think it's because she's also very clear in her objectives. The kids know the expectations. I think it's because she's also very clear in her objectives. The kids know the expectations.
Sometimes teaches multiple grade levels in a classroom. And I think that's very hard and she does it with such grace. And she's so good at it.
I think that's what makes Rachel so successful is that she knows a part of being a great teacher is making school really fun.
She loves science and she always finds a way to make her lessons engaging and authentic. Sometimes I'll see her walking into the building with a bag full of eggs from Scott's shop. She could have learned just with any or pumpkins because she would be nice to them. That's like a pumpkin, you know, taking out its parts and throwing it in the bucket.
I had that one teacher that we love so much. I had a science teacher who had this amazing science lab with a saltwater tank and a freshwater tank. We took care of starfish and sponges. And we had a fairy named Bob in the class. And she was just like an amazing teacher that taught us all this crazy stuff. And it was like the best day to do science with her. So I always wanted to be like her as a little girl.
We work a lot together because we share our kids. Everyone who's in her classes is basically in one of my classes as well. So we work very closely together on their goals, what she's looking for them to achieve or accomplish in certain content areas.
She's really big on movement in the classroom. So you'll see her and her students participate in a bunch of different activities that get kids out of their seats and moving every day. And I think that helps students academically and also actually form a bond.
Because.
Number one.
Seven.
When I notice that the kids are having a lot of fun, we do a lot more learning. We do a lot of dancing. We do a lot of zumba. We use our movements to count by twos. And the kids seem to respond to it. And I just see that the kids have a lot of success when we're all just being ourselves.
One of the things we always talk about here at George Washington is our keys to success. And they're getting to really know our students, being willing to be great and communicating. And I think when you talk about being willing to be great, I think Rachel, in terms of her attitude and her effort, is certainly the epitome of someone who's willing to be great.
Well, at the end of every year, I like to do a unit for nonfiction. The kids always have to write a bus. And I like to put their interest into it. And I noticed the kids are really interested in police and fire. So I actually have a couple of friends that are firefighters and police officers. So they come to the school and they bring the trucks. They brought the rescue truck one year. They brought the fire engine one year. And actually last year, when the fire engine came, we got to spray the fire hose. So I've never done that before either. So I had fun, they had fun. We were like all screaming. Some of the kids were like, oh, the fire's coming now. So it was a lot of fun. That was, that was really cool. One of the games that I like to play with my students is called trash football. And they have so much fun with this. We actually just tried it for the first time a couple of weeks ago. And what you do is you put note cards all around the room and a trash can in the center of the room. And they have bean bags and they have to stand on the note card and toss the bean bags and try to get it into the hoop or the net or the trash can. And they think it's so funny. And you put content on the card. So when they, they have to get it in and they can collect that card. And you can put whatever content you want. If you're doing science, if you're doing reading, we're actually going to do it with character traits with all the characters that we've been studying. And they don't even realize how much they're learning while they are moving and playing. And that makes so much fun.
She looks for their hidden talents and she looks for what they're really good at. And then she takes that and she makes that into learning and into education.
They come in knowing that there's certainly a structured plan in place, but there's going to be something fun and engaging that's going to happen. And something they probably haven't done before.
And she helps them find the love for learning and be so passionate about it themselves.
She's always willing to go kind of that extra mile to make sure every single student that she works with is as successful as he or she can be.
I remember her saying, I have this thing. It's called Go Noodle. I think Kevin's going to think it's crazy because the kids have to get up and dance around. But it really works and it gives them a break and then they can focus again. And she did it and I saw it. I was like, oh my God, this really works.
Miss Prat's class is fun because we do Go Noodle. Dancing it. Go Noodle's the best thing in the world.
For Halloween one year, we dressed up as M and M's. There was like a team of us. And we were all the colors of the M and M's. So that was pretty funny. That's just kind of what we do at GW. We're like a big family.
The few times that I've been in a classroom, I've been quite impressed how she's so knowledgeable with the behaviors that go on in that classroom.
I always feel comfortable to ask her questions. And I feel like that stands the same for anybody in the building.
Um, she's going to give another teacher an idea, whether it's a grade teacher or a kindergarten teacher.
I think Rachel, in terms of that peer coaching piece, has done such an excellent job being supportive for her colleagues. But also, I think so receptive to trying new things that she's learned in other classrooms as well.
The kids don't even know how strict she is because she's amazing at that job that she does.
Rachel has a way of finding the passion in a student that others might find difficult to find.
If anybody has a concern in regards to differentiating in the classroom, I feel like Rachel is our go-to girl here at the school.
She's natural at what she does. Even for such a young teacher, she seems like she's been teaching for 20 years.
And Rachel works with students who really face some different challenges. And Rachel's willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that these students succeed.
She, she just has this inner passion in her that she looks for in the students and she finds it with them and she helps them grow themselves.
I wanted a job that where I could be doing different things every day, year to year, changing it up, learn new things. I'm not the same person who likes to sit and do the same thing every day.
Congratulations.
Thanks, everyone. It's a real honor to be up here. Thank you for everyone that worked on that video. That was so cool. And I just want to say, I'm the lucky one that has such support.
And last we have Karen Johnson, who's a kindergarten teacher in our district. Karen Johnson started working in Mawa 24 years ago and has been changing the lives of our students ever since. Mrs. Johnson begins each day by greeting each child with good morning and ends it with a hug goodbye. She is loving, nurturing, and caring. Her students adore her, as do the parents and her colleagues. When you walk into her classroom, there's a sense of peace and calm. Her students are always learning and questioning, and her knowledge of teaching, reading, and writing is at the highest level. With all, all her students leaving kindergarten, reading, writing, and ultimately loving to learn.
I went to work out of college for the Bergen Record newspaper in retail advertising. Bottom, bottom of the barrel position, sales support person. And I was there for about two years. I got promoted a couple of times. And there was this woman who used to come back from sales on the road. I'm not going to say her name. But she changed my world and she doesn't even know it because she used to come back every day miserable. Not staying here. I've had it. I'm leaving this place. And she was much older than I was. And she was in the job that I was working toward. And one day she came back and I'm watching her. And I just, in my mind, something clicked and I said, that's not going to be me. So I started with the district in 1994. I taught at George Washington School, second grade. The following year, I, there was a job that opened in Betsy Ross. So I taught first grade for 14 years here at Betsy Ross. And then about nine years ago, I came to kindergarten. And I absolutely love it. Karen taught me a very valuable lesson from the very beginning. And that's teachers and parents have to be in partnership. So you know, what they're learning during the day has to come home. And it has to be a partnership with the parents that are reiterating what they taught them. You know, it's, so much happens when I'm, when I'm, take a step back and they're interacting, whether they're doing a project or they're problem solving, or if they're reading with a partner, or writing with a partner, or even on their own. And I'm just walking around and watching and listening and asking questions that help them explore their thinking.
She lets us do choice time.
Choice time is when you play.
Yeah.
This is a game. You get to play and some are blocks and some are whiteboards.
Yeah.
They do as much in here, if not more than I do. Because they are working and talking and interacting and everything that they do, you know. So yes, I help them get there, but it's about them. It comes from them.
Friends, I'm here for lunch crowd. But there's always those lightbulb moments, right, where you're saying, you, you try to, try and help a child and you try and try and try and you try different ways. And finally it breaks through. That was the look that those children give to Karen. In that moment, that's the look they gave.
Um, I like when Ms. Johnson gives us homework. Because I like homework.
As you walk into Karen's room, number one, the smell hits you. And it's this smell of cinnamon and just like goodness. I don't, I can't describe it. It's just this amazing smell and you just want to stay in there forever and be with these little people.
There are so many things that I love about teaching. I mean, and, and being here and at Betsy Ross and in Mawa. But really, it's just the, it's just being able to, to help them learn and grow in a way that makes sense to them and feels good for them. She really puts in her full heart into everything she does. She not only cares about the academic progress of her students. She also is concerned about their emotional well-being and their social well-being. Whether your close friends that have lunch every day and talk on the phone after school, or just someone that you chat with when you're here. We are, we are, we are always, we have each other.
Like right when we met each other, we, we just felt like we've known each other forever. And it's true. We got really, they're really, really best friends. So it's amazing to have, to have that camaraderie.
People, I think, they, they appreciate her, her ability to connect with kids, her kindness, her warmth. And that resonates through the whole building. And when I came to Betsy Ross, she's one of those people that, you know, as I was going around and introducing myself, if she could have given me a hug, she would have.
Karen in general is just the best teacher. You look at her and you're like, ah, she's the best teacher.
When I, for the first time, see a kid, realize that he or she just read something for the first time and see that face, it never gets old.
Right before it's time to go back to school, she is totally ready. And we chat about it and we'll say, you know, I, I kind of miss school. I miss the kids. And Karen is always like eager to come back to teaching her children here and seeing her children. And she actually reads up on these children before they enter her class. In September, she'll actually read through their, you know, previous, you know, preschool reports and everything. She really wants to get to know them.
My best memory was my first year at Betsy Ross. Kristen Remen was principal and I was back to school with her. And we're in the all-purpose room and Kristen Remen is introducing everybody in front of all the parents. And when she gets to Karen, and then you introduce Karen, the whole auditorium gets up and cheers and claps and screams. And I'm like, oh my goodness. And of course Karen, being Karen, looks over at me and says, don't worry, that'll be for you next year.
I guess that full call from Stu that day is my greatest memory because it's when this call opened up to me. And, and now I get to do what I love. I knew from that minute, besides the fact that I was running around screaming after I hung up and I was all happy, you know, a lot younger then, just knowing that I was going to get to do this.
You're, you're in her presence and it's just, you feel good. And imagine how the kids feel.
So from the smell to her smile and her hug, and then she throws up the guitar and learning. It's just this, it's amazing place to learn and live and be with little five-year-olds.
My Florida said, oh, you guys are amazing partners, but it's what I learned from Karen. She was my first kind of mentor. For calling it to teach that, this is somebody who's calling it to teach.
And she leaves no student untouched by her warm and generous heart.
I really do love to come every day here. So I can't imagine being anywhere else.
Just thank you so much for tonight and thanks to everyone I work with and Mawa for letting me do what I love so much. And what an honor and what a night. I can't thank you enough, really. Thank you.
Just to close my report, I want to thank Mr. Dennis Miguel, Mr. Cooper. His creativity, his innovation, his, his brain, put a lot of work into the pre-production, the production, the post-production work. So thank you, Dennis. I also want to thank a senior student, Gharanay Kusajian, who helped with all of the B-roll. So all of the video that you saw of the teachers at work, a lot of that was from one of our students. These videos will be accessible through our website tomorrow morning. And just to end, this is what it's all about. So although it's a long night. Back in with our report.
Thank you very much for that report this evening. Congratulations to everyone. I don't have a report this evening, so I'm supposed to ask many board members for the evening.
So I'm supposed to ask many board members for committee. Anyone else? Set.
On Monday, past Monday, this Sico, this Baron and I attended the MMA presentation on T-60. Sent by our, our Sutti parents. And it was interesting, one of you have a presentation like that. brochure that was changed out at the meeting. It's another good example of MMA that we have to meet. In May, in May, they're going to have a presentation on our family. And if you don't, don't. My own parents, you're, you're old, I'm going back and getting a new one. Again, thank you to MMA. It's vital, it's frightening. I knew nothing about vaping, but I was in a meeting seriously with this board. They're talking about vaping, I said, what the heck is vaping? Now I know. On Friday, I went to Mercer College Community, Mercer County Community College, and attended a presentation put on by the Jewish school boards. And I had that for you also, along with the topics of discussion. I attended four of the programs. What I discovered is that they had 11 vendors there. Of the 11 vendors, three of them dealt with school security. I looked back to it in the 1990s and early 2000s, when there was money available for construction. You went out to the, to the school boards, you trip over the architects. Now, this is being to have young school security. You have a few of the brochures taken down. But what's important is that Mawa is on the right track. Tonight, we're going to hold on a think question by Circle, Circle, Miss Circle. Who's a very good program. I spoke with the chief after that Monday evening. It's been tried and tested in numerous school districts in the area. And it works very well. The point I'm making is we're not rushing anything. We're taking and looking at things. There's going to be a slew of information out there of whole district programs. Many of them may be a scam. Real. But we're doing it systematically. We're really looking at these things. We're not rushing out to get this, this and that. We have been progressing even before, pardon me, with school security. Much, much more difficult to get into the buildings than it was, say, 10 years ago. You could just walk in. So we've come a long way. We're not finished. We're still looking at the best avenues. Very about the meeting they had yesterday with the police force. I said, I met with Chief Patelli and he's happy with what's going on. And, and I think we should be proud of our police force and our administration, the way they're progressing. Not to worry, we're very safe. I learned about, if you talk about Microsoft 360, I was like, what the heck is Microsoft 360? I found out, it's a very powerful program. It's available to the teachers, believe it or not, board members free of charge. Because we're educators, we can get this program free of charge. It's extremely powerful to watch and very versatile. Talking to Carlos in a couple of days, Carlos hooked me up. I think the rest of you should take a look at it and see it. I think you'd be surprised pleasantly what's about to offer. So thank you very much. Now they're all gone and they're quiet.
He's quiet now.
But thank you. Oh, by the way, you have this here, a little freebie. Put it in the back of your phone. And put your license or your, all your $20 bills or whatever.
Thank you very much for this little freebie. Appreciate it. Do you have any other board member, board committee reports? Anything else or board remarks anybody would love to make? Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to take old business. We have a motion to proceed. Mr. Wenderkowitz, seconded by Ms. Navartis. Any comments on the old business? Okay, take vocal, please.
Ms. Navartis.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sico. Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gala.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes.
Okay, now I'd like to take new business A through Z. If I may, I have a motion to proceed. Mr. Kismarski, seconded by Ms. Sico. Any comments, discussions on any of the items, A through Z? If you can go to them. Please take a call.
Ms. Navartis.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sico.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gala.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes.
I am abstaining, however, on check number 089971.
I was about to ask.
Sorry.
You know, I'd like to take new business A through K. We have a motion to proceed on that, please. Ms. Sico, seconded by Mr. Gala. Discussion, comments, any board members? All right, Mr. Wicker, please.
Ms. Navartis.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sico.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gala.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes.
Okay, this portion is public questions. So this section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes.
Ethel and Sean, proud to be in the head place. I just wanted to find out about the science assessments and any updates regarding the science assessments.
We'll follow up with you. We don't, I don't have them with me and I want to make sure we give you exactly.
Okay, and have there been any new developments with the park testing? Because I know there was a letter, I guess, just recently to the districts regarding going forward, reevaluating.
We're waiting for guidance, we're waiting for guidance on that.
Okay, okay. And then the last thing I'd just like to say with regards to, as far as everything that's gone on, you know, today with the 17 minutes of, you know, recognizing parkland and everything. I just want to reiterate that for me, the most important thing is to be proactive and to try and help these kids before we get to that point. And in the letter that went out, it says, you know, about the students, making sure that they're not disruptive to the orderly operation of the school. And you use that phrase a couple of times. And, you know, ironically, these kids having to do these lockdown drills, that to me is disruptive to the orderly operation of the school. So I think we should be more supportive of the students who want to express their right to sway Congress and our legislators on making amendments to the gun laws that we currently have. I know we have strict ones here in New Jersey, but there are lots of places that don't. And especially with that reciprocal concealed carry permit. I read one principal said that they cannot, a principal from Utah said that they cannot tell someone who has that permit not to bring a weapon into the school. So I don't know how correct that is. But, you know, my concern more is getting the guns off the streets and getting the guns out of the schools. And having less disruption in the school because of these lockdown drills. And more instructional time for the students.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Marietti, who are Ivy League. I wanted to thank you for all the communication that came out to the schools about the walkout today. I had a great opportunity to talk to my son about it after the fact. I didn't address it with him beforehand. I wanted him to be very independent and see. He had, it was a great conversation when he came home today. And I felt very empowered because I had so much from you about why what was being done was done. And I wanted to share what his feedback was. So Dennis is a STEM grader at the Ridge. And he came home today with mixed feelings initially. He said, well, it wasn't really a protest. And I said, oh, okay, what was it? He said, well, he described how they all had to sit in cafeteria, they sat in lines. He was a little disappointed that the teachers told them what to do, where to be, and that they weren't outside of the school. And he said, but then some students gave a really great presentation. It was about the 17 students who died in Florida. And he said, so it began to feel really different. It wasn't a protest. And he finally got to the word memorial and honor. And I said, did you, you know, how did you come to this decision to go? Because again, I left it completely up to him. And he said, well, at first I wasn't going to go because I had a project to do in class. And I didn't want to miss it. And he said, but my teacher said that she was going to give everybody an extra day. And he said, so it turns out that almost everybody went. And he said, I was, I felt really good that I went. I said, how do you feel? You feel you were part of something? And he said, yeah, I did. And then we got to talk about using your voice and saying things. And later, I'll be able to share when I have more time, how I shared my voice in high school as part of sad and mad students against drunk driving and mothers against drunk driving. And that was a very, my first experience being an advocate. So I wanted to thank you for that information and hope that we can continue empowering parents for vaping information that you give us. All of that is really being well-used. In the same breath, I wanted to commend you for the STEM facility. I was one of the first people applauding that. A few years ago, when we started with the athletic facility, I stood before you at this podium and asked that we consider something more similar to a STEM facility. And I'm very excited about that. I'm excited that we are not only doing something innovative by having it in our school, but it is a building that will foster innovation. So for me, it is a double success. With that being said, I wanted to ask that could we please use that emphasis on innovation when it comes to school security? I'm happy to see the progress that has been made so far. And I would like to beg you to please keep the guns out of the school. Please keep guns off our teachers. Please keep them at the authorities where they belong. But please, let's be innovative and let's be proactive. Let's not react and simply add more fuel to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dr. Sheldon, nice to see you. How are you? My name is Jeff Moore, 149 here, Hayden Road in Mawa, New Jersey. My children have attended Mawa schools for a total of 52 years. So I'll begin with a thank you to your fine faculty and board for all its fine work through the years. I was moved today for the same reason you were moved with the walkout. And I wanted to share some thoughts. Definitely overwhelmed with feelings of pride, having witnessed not only my own school district where I too am a superintendent, watching children rise up across our nation. They are, clearly are the generation of hope and change. And I hope that the adults in their lives, whether it be parents, community members, board members, teachers, will never squelch that spirit. Because I stand before you tonight and I tell you, they are our only hope for change. We know that the children are the world's most precious resource. They are the best hope for the future. And we have to step back and let that generation of hope and change lead the way. These are their schools. They are making a difference. Their voices are going to be heard. And they're going to make school life better for their children. You know, in the future. And I want to say I'm very proud of the 40 children. The 40 children in Mawa High School who walked out of that school today, even though they were told not to. That's what we want to see. We want to see that they were not in any way being disrespectful. They were trying to bring safety to the haven we know as schools. And I was proud to get home to dinner tonight and hear my own daughter say, when the student leaders invited us to leave, I got up and led the way with them. What a great moment. Yes, her name was taken upon re-entry. I don't think it was for safety and security reasons. But I'm glad that she did that. And I just wish others had the courage. And I think they will. Because they see the student leaders saying enough is enough. Here on our soil, where schools are a sacred and safe place for learning alongside the teachers and educators we not only respect, but you saw here tonight, that we love as well. She said, Daddy, if I get punished? She said, bring it on. Because she stood up for what she believes in. And she is so concerned about every student in America who comes now after. She's a senior, she's heading out into the big world. And we know it's a scary place. But she's so concerned for the little tender hearts and minds that have to perhaps continue to live in a country where gun violence is accepted. So government, boards of ed, across the nations, watch out. Because these kids are rising up. And I'm very proud to stand with them. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Bring us a deal here. So thank you all and thank you for leaving a moment of silence. It's important. I think it's something that we need to keep in the top of our, in the forefront of our thoughts. We don't have the police here this time. We did last time, it was very helpful. Sadly, there are not that many people here this time as well. I wish there were. I'm going to be here until we get to a place where we can prevent guns from getting into our schools, prevention. So I love that the police have badges now because I find it actually scary that they wouldn't have been able to get in the school if there was an emergency. I mean, could you imagine this? That's, so I'm very happy about that. I think to see something safe, something absolutely needs to continue. Sadly, I think the drills have to continue. Simply because if there's guns in the school, we have to tell our kids what to do. I think it's horrible, I think it's scary, and I think it's unfortunate, but it's necessary. I'm interested to hear about the lobby guard. I'm wondering, you're saying that it will take licenses and scan it in and check for offenders versus Megan's law. Okay. Do you know if this technology can check for any other type of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We'll certainly find out.
Can you investigate that? Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know what it could look like because I don't know how much public record is, other than Megan's law is a public thing. So I don't know how logistically it would work. But on that note, we're talking about someone coming to the school, handing out their driver's license. We're not talking about kids bringing guns into school yet. And I think we need to bring that one back to the conversation. So I'm interested to hear a little bit more about your meeting and the things that you all have investigated on it. I want to specifically focus on proactive measures. So a lot of these are sort of the reactive training and things. I mean, training in some sense is proactive. Your see something, say something is proactive in a certain sense. But I want to know, how are we physically, what are we doing to physically keep guns out of schools? Have you looked into having police officers there 100% of the time, visible for everyone to see? Have you looked into metal detectors? Have you looked into, what other types of physical barriers are we looking at at this point in time?
February 28th is two weeks ago. In the last two weeks, we've held one meeting already with our police department and security group room, if I may, Captain Jackie. A number of things that we have put in place. Some are reactionary, but some are proactive and see something, say something is. Have we had discussions to date about armed security guards or metal detectors? No, no, we have not. Partly because I haven't had that with the police department yet. And I would safely assume that my board is going to rely on me with the recommendation of a police department to move forward. And then what the implications of that would be. I had mentioned a little bit as far as, you know, armed guards are concerned. And some people may think it's great in the high school, but, but not in elementary school. There are two sides to that. So you can say, put in metal detectors tomorrow, and you can say, have armed guards. You could. But there are going to be a lot of people on the other side of that camp that are going to say, I do not want my child going through that metal detector. And one further, if that metal detector goes off because their belt buckle sets it off, I don't want anybody touching my child. And I think we need to keep that in mind. So have we had that discussion yet? No, and I'll be very honest with you, we have not. I have not with the police department. So therefore, the board hasn't received information in regards to that. We will, we will. But has that been done yet? No.
If you go to redcircle.com, you'll get to see that, that unit and what it does, what it can do. I don't think we're going to involve. I don't think we're going to involve all the things it offers, but most of the things we're going to be using right now.
Redcircle.com is the company that does the lobby guard, correct?
Okay.
So go ahead.
I'll definitely do that.
That'll provide you some of the information as well.
Okay, so I do want to, though, mention is, when we first emailed, Dr. Shon, when we first emailed back in January before Parham, before this rumored, whatever it is, everything that's, you know, sort of brought this to the forefront of Mawa, I'm actually happy it's in the forefront of Mawa, because it needs to be. Again, disappointed that there aren't more people here, as, you know, even the police chief said, certain things happen and then tensions de-escalate, and we can't allow the tensions to de-escalate. When we spoke back in January, you at that point had also asked for two weeks, and you were going to have the meeting, and then there was snow and everything, that sort of way, you know?
Twice, two or three times.
Yeah, exactly. But since then now, you know, that was January, we're now in March. We can't wait, we can't wait. And we can talk about this, we have to investigate, we cannot wait to build out the possibility that guns are in schools. Bring any parent in front of me that says they don't want their kid seeing a police officer, and I want to ask them if they want to see their kid in a casket. This is ridiculous, and I'm sorry, but this is life and death we're talking about. We have more people here to show up and recognize our teachers who are phenomenal, but guess what? Who's protecting them? What's protecting them? This is really, I mean, I was so hoping to hear more from you, and again, I can't thank you enough for everything that you are doing, but I will say, time and time again, it's not enough right now. Our kids are at risk, they're vulnerable. You can walk through an airport and get more security than you can walk through in a place where we have targets. It's unacceptable. And the fact that we're talking about, we can't do this overnight, and I appreciate that you can't rush into things and do certain things, but we have to act faster. And we can't be talking about badges when kids can bring guns into school tomorrow. They can do it tomorrow, and we're sitting here talking about how things take time. So I'm going to beg you to come with more information next time, to have had those conversations. You can have a conversation in two weeks. I worked, and I would never tell a team that I work with, my boss, anything, another peer that, two weeks later, we haven't had that discussion, but you know what, I talked about badges. It's not okay anymore. We need to do more, and I'm hoping to hear more from you in the next meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else?
I happened to run into Jim Vitelli the other day, and we had a nice chat, and one of the things that we talked about and that he even suggested, which I said that the parents all would like to see would be after-school programs at the middle school to enfold these kids, you know, and the kids who are maybe not into sports, you know, because if you have, if you're into sports, you get on a sports team, you have a big group of friends, but maybe these kids who are not included in these other groups, you know, they used to have chess, they used to have, you know, science, rocketry, you know, and then some things for the girls, you know, well, I shouldn't say that, I don't want to speak the girl-boy, but, you know, just different, different things that interest different kids. And for after, after-school programs, so these kids get a group, get a friend group that may not otherwise have the opportunity at school, because these days in school, they can barely talk to each other. I mean, I feel like they're so regimented during school hours now, it's, it's hard for them if they don't have that connection outside of the classroom to get connected with someone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I love Karen Johnson. Both my kids had her.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we had her for half-days, not full-days, I missed it by one September. One of my best memories of coming to, becoming a parent with kids at school was with Karen Johnson. I got a chance, she was inviting parents to come into the class and teach lessons throughout the year, I got a chance to come in and teach a lesson about adaptations, animal adaptations and bioluminescence. We had glow sticks before, we're not, not glow sticks. And my lesson was supposed to be 40 minutes, and we had so much fun together, I remember her standing there and saying, you know, you can keep going, these kids are really engaged. And it was just such a, I'm so happy for the students that have had her full-time ever since then, but thank you for the program, it was great to learn so much, and I love Karen Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Dr. Morthee. You may adjourn. Thank you all.